Remotely, I would like to verify your presence trustees online trustee Kennedy, are you there?
Yes Chair.
Uh trustee Saunders.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seven, so we shall move to call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting with the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being live streamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams, we automatically placed in queue. And remember to turn your desk mics on and those online, you can turn your cameras on when you, when you speak. With that, we shall move on to item 1.1, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, the Our Father and National Anthem. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged and thanked.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you trustee Yabo, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father and National Anthem?
Thank you through, uh through you Chair. Um so as yesterday was the national day of truth and reconciliation, I thought it'd be great to kind of do a prayer that'd help us uh kind of guide us in our journey of reconciliation. So if you'll join me in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. We remember the many, many indigenous children who did not return for residential school. Grant comfort in the midst of grief and trauma. Renew our commitment to the journey of true telling, mourning, and responsibility to guide us in the ways of healing and love. Amen. Now if you join me in the Our Father.
Our Father. Lord of heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Thank you trustee Yabo for leading us in prayer. Item 1.2 motions arising from in camera, there were no motions in the in camera session that will require a vote in the public session. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Uh do we have any additions or additions or corrections to the agenda? And do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? Saying none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for a mover.
Hamil.
Trustee O'Han Chenada moves, looking for a seconder. Trustee Carabella seconds, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee. How do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee O'Han Chenada.
In favor.
Mr. Agnew. Trustee, trustee Kelly. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Yabo.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the agenda is approved. Our next order of business is declarations of conflict of interest, do we have any conflicts to be declared tonight? Saying none, we shall move on to presentations, we have no presentations. Uh in number five delegations, we have no delegations for this board meeting. Uh we shall now move on to item number six, which is our next order of business is the consent agenda. Uh the following, following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda, action item 6.1.1. And one noted item, there will be a single motion to approve the action items. There will be no discussions on the action item as well as noted item. I will now read the motion. Uh resolved at the Halton Catholic District School Board, approve consent agenda item 6.1.1 on October 1st, 2024 as submitted. May I have a mover please? Move by trustee Murphy, looking for a seconder. Vice Chair Agnew. Um I shall call the vote on, on the consent agenda, item number six point. Trustee O'Han Chenada.
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
In favor.
The Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Yabo.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. We shall now move on to uh directly to action items, number nine. Uh so we have, we have one action item which has two parts. I will now ask Superintendent Merrick to speak to this item and then I will read and place the uh individual motion on the table. Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we have the 2025 facility renewal projects. Uh these are projects to be completed, uh to renew the condition of our schools, uh most of them taking place next summer. And uh there are two resolutions in the package uh for consideration tonight by the board. The first motion or to is to approve the projects and the second motion to approve the budget at approximately, or at exactly nine million dollars.
Thank you Superintendent Merrick, can I have the motions put up on the screen please? Uh motion one. Thank you, I shall now read the motion, resolved at the Halton Catholic District School Board, authorize staff to proceed with the proposed 2025 facility renewal projects. May I have a mover please? Trustee Powell moves. Uh Vice Chair Agnew, seconds. Uh thank you trustees, uh motion is in order, I'll place it on the table. Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Merrick? I see a couple of hands up, trustee Murphy, your hand is up for this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Through you, um.
So I'm, I'm not going to be doing three minutes and three minutes, it looks like a straightforward motion, so trust is a chance.
Uh through you to Superintendent Merrick, um can, I'm just curious how often turf is replaced? That was, that's for part one.
Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, it, it depends a little bit on the use, but typically now on, on our heaviest used fields, which typically are in Milton, would be about around 10 years. And then our least used fields, which are the ones in Oakville, closer to 15, but can also depend on weather conditions, we've had floods at them before, those can affect it as well, but say 10 to 15 years.
Thank you trustee Murphy.
Yeah, just to follow up, I don't see turf replacement on appendix A, so what category does this fall under in terms of the budget?
Uh Superintendent Merrick.
There, there's no turf replacements, actually we have a track replacement, but no turf replacements for next year, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um.
You have a
Can I thought a last?
Clarification?
Yeah, no, that, that's fine, I understand that, I guess my last question is uh there's reference to board, the board's uh building standards, is there a policy around that or something um that you can reference for us to look at?
Uh Superintendent Merrick.
We typically look at like the Ontario Building Code or for uh mechanical units, mechanical ventilation, the ASHRAE standard is kind of the standard that's referenced in the Ontario Building Code. It, it's somewhat of our own internal building standards and we, we have a fairly high standard here at Halton Catholic. And we try and maintain that standard across all of our buildings, but there's no uh you know prescribed written one other than the building code and then the applicable codes that go with it like ASHRAE.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank, thank you trustee Murphy. Uh next is trustee Sanders, you have the floor.
Uh yeah, through you Chair to Superintendent Merrick. Superintendent Merrick, when we were doing the tour of the new school, um St. Cecilia, I had noted that it was quite warm in the school and one of the local councillors had also asked me about that, is there any issue with the air conditioning there, is it going to require any kind of spending or uh can you sort of just give us some clarity on what, what, what was happening?
Trustee Saunders, uh we'll hold that question for later, just right now we're just working on a motion to, to authorize the city renewal. Uh and that question is about the schools.
Okay.
Later point in time, okay, I'll come back, I'll remind you about that. Uh any questions regarding uh authorizing staff to proceed with facility renewals? Any further questions trustees? Uh seeing none, we have the motion up there please. So the motion has been moved by trustee Powell and seconded by uh Vice Chair Agnew, I shall now call the vote on this item. Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
Favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Yabo.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the first part of the motion carries, may I have the second part of the motion uh up there please? Thank you, uh Superintendent Merrick, you would like to speak to this or, okay, thank you, I shall now read the motion. Uh resolved the Halton Catholic District School Board, authorize staff to expense funds from available capital funding and the capital reserves for the proposed 2025 facility renewal projects and that the expenditure will not exceed nine million dollars. May I have a mover for this please? Vice Chair Agnew. Seconder, Murphy. Trustee Murphy. Thank you, motion is in order in the floor, trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on the motion, one of us moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Yabo.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Yabo Chenada.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew. So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Thank you Superintendent Merrick. Shall now move on to uh item number 10, staff reports, we have no staff reports. Our next order of business is in, information items, item number 11, 11.1 Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Good. Hold on. This Director's Report again aligns with our priorities in our MYSP, achieving, believing, belonging, and becoming. It's a lot going on at this school board and I just wanted to highlight a few things. Uh when I wrote this uh report, uh this was really sort of late breaking news, so we'll start with EQAO results. Um which was sort of as the deadline approached, I was adding this to it, but I think it's important. Uh the diocesan mass in celebration of Catholic education, good highlight in terms of the uh commonalities amongst boards within our diocese. Uh belonging, uh we do mark some significant days of recognition within our, our school board, as we do in the community, uh local and broader. And then one highlights one of our new schools, St. Veronica, small but mighty. And again, fairly recent news. Uh HCDSB kindergarten open houses, which for October 1st seems a little odd, but you do know that we need to the early bird, uh et cetera. EQAO results. Hmm I don't think there's anybody in this room or beyond who doesn't know what EQAO is. Uh there's probably adults in this room now who have written EQAO assessments. Um it because it's been around for well over a generation and a half. The full name is of course the Ontario Educational Quality and Accountability Office. And it is a sorry, I'm blocking myself, it's an independent agency that creates and administers large scale assessments for all our students. It's an assessment of curriculum, it's not a quote unquote standardized assessment or criteria reference, norm reference, it's one that looks at our, our curriculum. And that's obviously changed over those years as well. And it uh comes at key transition points in students' lives, at the end of the primary division. At the end of the junior division where of course we're looking at reading, writing, and mathematics. Beginning of high school where it's just mathematics only. And then we have uh an OSSLT, which is a literacy test that is uh needed to get one's diploma. And that uh takes place in grade 10. And the results we have are here. And you've seen them and there's a lot to be proud of. And I'll just draw your attention to the, the green numbers at the bottom, just in that, to give people a sense of how this board is doing relative to the province, and you can see them there. In terms of reading, writing, and mathematics. Reading, writing, and mathematics, and then math with grade nine. How the numbers again are, you know, eight percent above the provincial average, 10%, 5, 5, 8, and 10% over the average, and that's all something to be proud of in terms of the work our students do and the work that our educators do to support them. In terms of the OSSLT, uh we are again head of the province uh with regard to that. Uh by 4%. I would also state that we do have some uh reports uh coming up over the next month or so. I know that Superintendent Skripak will be doing a presentation where there'll be uh further details in this, further details in terms of uh what we have done in terms of analyzing the data. Schools are getting their data now, there's item information reports that each school gets to. So you can go pretty deep down into the uh, the tunnel system of looking at data for for students individually and for schools, so I will not be digging into that. But rest assured that those uh, those data are amongst other data we have in uh our school system important and ones that we can uh look at very carefully. Diocesan mass of celebration of Catholic education, sometimes it's important to know that um the connection with the diocese, the connection with the bishop is something that for us is um uh a touchstone, something that is a, a guiding post for us as a Catholic education system. Obviously, we're in the diocese of Hamilton and we're probably aware that there are other school boards that rest within that diocese as well, going all the way up into uh Bruce Gray and uh and, and further down to where we are at uh on the shores of Lake Ontario. Every year, this rotates from board to board and I think we're coming up in about three years, maybe four years. Uh every year there is a diocesan mass to celebrate Catholic education. And we had that uh, uh about a week ago. And um that was celebrated at St. Pius Church in uh Branford. So Superintendent Skripak of course was there as it's his uh home turf. And uh we had the opportunity to listen to uh Dr. Josephine Lombardi. Dr. Josie Lombardi is the Assistant Dean for Academic Affairs uh at St. Augustine Seminary, which is Toronto, I guess. And in her talk, she focused on the Jubilee Year coming up. Dr. Lombardi also, as you're aware, has a book that came out this year focusing on the uh, the Lord's Prayer. And of course, heading toward the Jubilee Year, the Holy Father has asked us to focus on the Lord's Prayer and the uh, the beauty and the uh uh the uh guidance that that allows for us, not only now, but has for thousands of years. And so she focused on that for a short period of time to give uh those assembled a sense of the evangelical mission of our Catholic schools uh historically and then now and in the future. And then the mass itself was celebrated by uh Bishop Crosby. There are many significant days uh throughout the month of October, certainly schools don't mark them all. Some of you know there's days that sometimes surprise us in terms of International Taco Day or something like that. We try and focus on the ones that might be of uh significance in terms of the common good, in terms of our, our mission as as a Catholic school system. But really what we do is we, we, we note days to honor really particular events, uh employee groups and celebrate employee groups. Uh holidays that are noteworthy, our own, in our own faith tradition, but those of course uh for those in our community uh as well. Uh and of course, uh priorities are important to the school system and uh ones like World Mental Health Day is an example, it's something that uh is not only a uh uh concern for us uh in our families, but a concern for us in society. St. Veronica. St. Veronica Catholic Elementary School, feast day is July the 12th. And like our last report, this is also one other school for Father Larry to uh focus on, so I'm not sure if he's going to get extra pay from the bishop for this. This is one more school added to uh, to his uh list of, of work. Uh it's 229, we're growing, I think we're all aware that when we build schools, not only here in Halton, but uh around the province, you start and then boom, kids are coming uh fairly fast and furious. So we expect that school to, to grow at a steady pace. Um uh trustee Murphy, this is her again, uh in her bailiwick and uh Michael Skripak is the superintendent. And right now, all reports, things are going well. And if you go into these schools, uh many of us gathered at St. Cecilia not that long ago, you will notice it, and if you are someone who has had a history at other school boards, uh I think it's fairly common for those of us to go into schools that are in Halton, not just the new ones. And uh not necessarily will jaws drop, but I think it's a common um reaction amongst many that our schools are in very good shape. Uh not only our new schools, but ones we've had for, for many years. And uh St. Veronica, of course, is no less. And we're well staffed and ready for this school year. And there's a, one picture of it that I think gives a good sense of the beauty of it. October 1st, and we're talking kindergarten. Uh the fact of the matter is, uh most of us in this room have had children that have gone into kindergarten at one point. I would assume that all of us in this room have somehow had a kick at the can at kindergarten experience. We do know this is very important, it's important that we have uh enrollment that is healthy in kindergarten. And as Superintendent Donalfo has shared with us before, right now, this year, we're very happy with the number of kindergartens we've had coming into Halton Catholic District School Board. The younger they are, as the Jesuits have said, the better thing. Show us when they're uh kids, we will show you the, the men and women in years to come. Uh our schools offer full day uh kindergarten, we used to say junior kindergarten, senior kindergarten. Not the terms we necessarily use now, we talk about uh year one and year two, you didn't know that, did you? I see confused looks. Junior kindergarten, if you say that to a student, they will look at you aghast and be upset at how out of touch you are. Uh and we want to make sure that we get ahead of things in terms of providing opportunities for parents to get an understanding of the kindergarten program, again, we call it program, not curriculum. Uh it is a program. Uh I personally, and I think senior team would share this, think it's a wonderful program and it's a program that has evolved, of course. But it's a program that really approaches uh children as they are and tries to again um allow them to uh become uh the students that they are as we move forward. And uh not just necessarily getting them, you know, ready for grade one, it's a matter of having them be comfortable in these uh communal settings of learning together and learning uh at their developmental pace. And so we have some opportunities for uh parents to uh learn more about this program. And those are there before you and of course they're, they're strategically placed in certain areas of our of our uh district and uh that allows them uh to be able to uh to learn more. It is not the end of the world if a mom or dad shows up at the Oakville one, but they're in Burlington or et cetera, there's no uh guards at the door to prevent you from heading into those. There's a lot to learn and we'll have uh senior, uh we'll have senior staff there. And, and we'll also have staff from schools and staff from central uh uh from program as well, to give a sense of what, what the kindergarten program is all about, because for many of us it's been a long time since uh we were there and to ask a lot of questions. Uh if it's your second or third or more child, it's a little different than when it's your first child. Uh because many of us as parents are wondering, we're scared, we're excited. Uh maybe we're looking forward to the child being out of the house for a while, uh for a few hours. Uh but regardless, it is a, it's a big step. Uh my first principal said to me, it's really the next to grade nine and, or grade eight into nine, it really is the biggest step that our students take, and so it's exciting, so we're a quick off the mark on this, I'd like to thank uh staff for ensuring that we are being proactive. Uh all our staff from school staff, all the way up through our senior team and of course our our great consultants and others in the uh in what we call the cottages over, over yonder. Happy to entertain any questions you have about kindergarten or anything else.
Thank you Director Klein. Trustee Saunders, you have your hand up and yeah, you did uh talk about the school temperature climate, okay, uh Saunders, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Um my, my first question was, I'm aware that there used to be uh air purification units in our schools up until last year. And I understand that they've been removed and I'm wondering uh you know, considering this looks like a pretty significant health and wellness issue, uh why they were removed and, and where are they now?
Uh this to Director Klein.
Sure.
Yeah, Director Klein, I'm sorry, through you.
I have time today, so we'll take a few extra questions, Director Klein.
I would have made a longer report if I'd known we'd have all this time for questions. Happy to uh to speak to that trustee Saunders. I might take the evaluations around the, the question or the assumptions around. Certainly uh give you a sense of uh, I'll go back and repeat what I said earlier in uh terms. in terms of the outstanding condition of schools in Hallton Catholic District School Board. With regard to HEPA filters, I will tip it over to our stalwart Superintendent Merrick to give some response to that that I think you'll be impressed by.
Thanks, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. So we did have HEPA filter units in our classroom pandemic. The HEPA filters were given to the board by the ministry at no cost to the board. There was also funding at the time, this is, you know, several years ago now. There's funding at the time to provide for operation, amongst other things, of the units. They also provided us with replacement filters as well at the time. The HEPA units, they were not required in our schools. We have mechanical ventilation. We do, we bring in fresh air from outside, unlike HEPA filters. We actually bring in fresh air from outside with our mechanical ventilation. We also filter the, any air that's recirculated within the school as well. And we have, like, probably, like, I will say, we're likely, very likely, the only board in the province that has mechanical ventilation and cooling in all of our classrooms across the board. But they were provided to us, so we use them. That funding is long gone now. The funding is gone. There's a lot of, you know, cost to operate the units, and there's also a lot of cost to replace the filters with those units, and the funding is gone. So, you know, we've removed the units from the classrooms. They're in need of repair or maintenance to all of the units now. They're well past their service life on their filters. So without investing more money into them, we can't continue to operate them, and that's why we moved them from our school. So that's, you know, we'd be happy to operate them, but it's a funding issue. Unless we're going to cut funding from other programs that we offer and that we have offered for years at the board, we can't continue on with that HEPA filter program, so.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, your follow-up question?
Yeah, just the initial one I had asked just about the new school, Saint Cecilia. Is there any known issue with the air conditioning? Just because myself and, like I said, one of the local trustees had mentioned that it was extremely warm in the school. Is there any report or any mechanical issues that we need to know about?
So trustee Saunders, we can name schools here, but we can ask the question about systems in schools. So Superintendent, you have a. Yeah, so trustee Saunders, I don't think Superintendent Merrick can help you because his team is not aware of any issues there. But again, it's a, it probably has some starting tuning issues there. So we shall move on to the next trustee, Ohun Chanata, and then come back to you if you have questions. Trustee Ohun Chanata.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. I do have two questions. One is in regard to EQAO 2024. And you don't have to present it now, but I'm just curious, how do we compare to EQAO 2023? I know we're above the provincial standards, which is amazing, you know, the 10 to 5%. How do we compare year over year?
Quick question, sorry, through you, Chair. I don't have those stats on hand, but I think they'll come out the next one. I'm gonna, oh, are you gonna? He's ready. Somebody's got it tattooed on his arm.
I do know, but I will be sharing that data in two weeks.
It's called a teaser.
Like, I can give you that sneak peek and say.
I'm not, I don't think I can wait that long. No, just kidding.
We did show improvement in some areas, and I wouldn't say statistically significant decreases in others.
I just, I just want to know the difference, that's all. So my curiosity. Thank you.
Trustee Ohun Chanata, go ahead.
Thank you. And another question, I do have a question coming out of the voice of Halton Hills in regards to, I think we're having a challenge as far as staffing our, staffing with French teacher in Halton Hills. So I'm getting some voice out of Halton as far as staffing French teachers. So I'm just wondering if we can speak to that, Director Klein, how we're doing, what are our challenges? And I'm sure there's going to be a positive outcome.
Director Klein.
Thank you, trustee Ohun Chanata. The, so specifically about Halton Hills, I can turn it over to the superintendent there or our HR, but I will say as a little preface to it, that the, there's challenges not only locally, but provincially with regard to staffing for French teachers in schools. There are many schools and other boards where there are no French teachers, and there are problems throughout the country. Other provinces are facing trouble. And at a meeting I was at with provincial leads in Canada, we were told that Canada was even getting a bit of a finger wag from European countries of trying to poach teachers who are part of la francophonie, either in Europe or in other countries as well. So it is a concern that is shared, not just here in Halton, but in other areas as well. We faced a couple of challenges. I wouldn't say that these are challenges that are insurmountable, but I will turn it over right now to Superintendent Oldman, maybe to give us a bit of an update on where we are with that.
Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Yeah, so I think we typically used to have, I guess, staffing seasons, and they're just, it's just all one season now. So it basically is a process that never really ends. I think if I can chalk out our current circumstance to our French, we do have a few French positions that remain open. Not for lack of effort, certainly, but I think there's some factors that play into our current circumstance. The first of which is, as we'll recall, there intentionally has been movement or the desire to seek movement across teaching staff in the province of Ontario. And that has come through the ability for us to allow for mobility. Traditionally, when someone's hired permanently at a board, they didn't have the mobility to move to another board in the province. That language has changed, and there's an increase in mobility, and we benefit, to be honest, from that. But we also are at the detriment of that same language, so it's kind of a double-edged sword, if I may. So I think the challenge in terms of mobility and what that posed for us, that it really informs the current, is we were well-staffed. As you know, we've made concerted efforts in the last couple of years to be well-staffed in our French programming, in our variety of well-versed French programming at Halton Catholic. I think our challenge really boils down to here is that this mobility language, which is relatively new in the province, really left us with handfuls of last-minute resignations in the days leading up to the Labor Day and in the last three weeks. If I'm being completely honest, we weren't necessarily, you're not, nobody's afforded, if there's another job that starts tomorrow, you're not always then afforded sometimes the notice period that comes with that, which allows for a little bit of continuity or transition or baton passing. So I think mobility is certainly something that's changing in the province, and this was an ill effect of it, because we really, we kind of got the last-minute nature of some of that movement. I can confirm, though, on more of a positive note, and there's other kind of conditions that maybe don't well inform our current circumstance, but I can share that we have, we intended, I think we had eight French qualified candidates interviewed last week. We have another 15 that we're seeking to shortlist and have interviews. We're just waiting on the candidates themselves to confirm their availability. So there are candidates out there, is all that's to say. It's about timing, really, more than anything, and that kind of informs my earlier point on market competitiveness and about mobility. I think we, and we obviously have limitations within our collective agreement, as well as how much we can move and how quickly and at what time. So our market competitive is a little bit limited there. But really, in order to, I think, be competitive and ensure that we're not in the situation like for, you know, September of '25, we certainly need to make some hiring earlier on and plan for this mobility contingency that really we just haven't seen, or we're seeing it at an increasing rate now. So the plan is that we've got more interviews stocked. We do have a few who we're just waiting on criminal reference checks and the like. So there are a few positions that I'm saying right now are vacant, but we actually have them filled, in our view. We're just waiting for those to come in to adhere to policy.
Thank you. Trustee Ohun Chanata, that was your second question. Do you have a clarification? Or you can come back in the queue.
I'll come back.
Come back. Thank you. With that, we shall move on to trustee Carabella. You have a hand up in the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question had to do with the EQAO. And perhaps I'll wait for the report too, but I had a question. So we just got the one numbers, but basically, the data you receive is split into each school and each class. So even though it shows that, so my question is that. And then, then when you get the results, here we have it as an average, and we're above average. But some schools that don't perform that well, do they get supports in literacy and numeracy? And what would that look like?
Director Klein.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, trustee Carabella. Very good questions. And again, these will be answered in an ongoing way, not only through the work that Superintendent Skripak and others are doing in terms of the reading and the writing and the arithmetic or mathematics, but also a really good connection to the Student Achievement Plan. That's not just the boards, but then each school, again, we used to call it School Improvement Plan. Would, this would be something that should be reflected in terms of their, the strategies that they will focus on in the upcoming few months. You're right, when we received this information, it was hot off the press in terms of overall. And then EQAO sends those out, and then what they do is they begin to send out the individual ones for schools. So the individual ones for schools are coming out and are out. And then what will happen is there'll be opportunity for principal and staff, school improvement team in each school, to begin to look through those and see what those tea leaves, as it were, are telling them. Not only for this year, then they'll look at last year as well. And it's an interesting set of data, because it's kind of, it's a lagging data to a certain extent, right? Because we're getting the information of something that has passed. So these students are now in grade four or in grade seven or in grade 10, so you need to look at that. It's really through long periods of time. COVID, again, amongst, besides a lot of other things, didn't really help with this in terms of a long experiment of seeing patterns. But there are opportunities for staff, both here at the board and then each school, to begin to see. So are there patterns that might inform us about how we want to respond in terms of our, it could be our instructional practice or our assessment practice? And then with, there's not necessarily class reports, but there are individual reports too that would also help with schools to make decisions and to talk to parents about it. One person described it once, one of the professors at OIC in terms of student achievement and what we do with data, he had a beautiful metaphor about an impressionist painting, like a Van Gogh or Renoir or Manet, where it's little dabs of paint are the data, and when you add them all together, you get a sense of a picture. But a few on their own don't necessarily give you everything. Or a superintendent that I worked with many years ago said, you know, you go to the doctor and you get a battery of tests. There's not one test that says, boom, you're a seven on the health scale or something. There's a whole bunch of them. So EQAO is important. We don't want to overemphasize it, don't want to underemphasize it as well. Like a gauge of health, it's one thing, it's a moment in time, and it allows for conversations around it as well. It's not a panic button. If so-and-so, it's a short period of time for some students. So it might, there's all sorts of opportunities for people to go, yeah, but look at report cards, look at other ongoing assessments that teachers are doing. And it might either square with that or not square with that, and allows those conversations. Again, to quote somebody in my past who once said, if there was one test that could say, here's where Johnny is or Helena is, we'd have that test. And, but right now, this is a series of tests. The beauty of this for Ontarians is this, though, is the only one that is focused on our curriculum. So obviously, there's standardized tests, but they don't necessarily reflect the Ontario curricula. I'm going to ask Superintendent Skripak just to see if there's anything else he wants to add to that.
So data has been shared now with superintendents, principals have access and are now accessing and looking through their data. Sometimes they give us a call already, and we're looking at it. It came as, EQAO tends to surprise us now with when it's available. Usually, it was available about a month ago for us in the past. One thing I would clarify, we will never, we won't get data, but they don't disaggregate the data beyond the school. And that was an agreement that was made many, many years ago with the government. They wouldn't publish individual class results. But parents, as of this week, information was sent to principals today to make sure that they send out the ISR records. So I think by the end of this week, if not the beginning of next week, all parents will have received the ISR, the individual student record, so their child's aware of how they're doing. And now I know, based on the number and volume of emails I'm already getting, that principals are already eager to share the data with their schools and are already starting to think about how they might start planning ahead. And then more to come about how we're supporting at the system level certain schools. That's in two weeks. So I know you're all riveted and excited. I can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. Director Klein, I just want to ask about secondary school class size averages. I noticed that we have now posted our report for June of '24. And according to the, we had many sessions about this and conversations during the year, and we were told the class sizes, everything was fine. And it does say that the average class size in a given school year of a board's secondary school classes shall not exceed 23. But I noticed on our website, we had an average of 23.18. Can you give us some clarity on that?
Director Klein.
Thank you for that. You know, we have noted that before, and thank you, trustee Kennedy. Through you, Chair. I know trustee Kennedy, this is a question that you've posed before. And so I'm gonna certainly tip my hat to Superintendent Alfo and the staff that work with her, because there's a whole array of numbers, and there's a whole array of moving target timelines that are important to remember when we come to this. So I'll give a sense, know the fact that we're funded at certain ratios. We know for a fact that is good stewards, we need to be mindful of that, and very purposeful and thoughtful and collaborative in terms of making decisions around these. And we also know that funding doesn't match these things. And we also know that the timelines sometimes are either tight, and the reporting dates are sometimes out of. Having said that, I will turn this over to Superintendent Alfo.
First, should the secondary class size average for last we get that report in August? And the data is pulled from October 31st of '23, March 31st of '24, and June 30th. And they take the info about student who are enrolled in, and that's how we get the compliance report. It's not as, it's a report for elementary, which you cannot submit. You have to continue to add classes until you get to compliant. With secondary, we don't have that opportunity throughout the year to gauge where we're falling. Having said that, second report, the okay, so in-person learning is 23 to 1, e-learning is 30, the ratio in the class. But when you compare, have both of those together, we are compliant, because the e-learning programs average was 25.55. So the in-person learning is going to feel that pressure. So we're actually, since we are so far off with the e-learning last year, you're feeling that pressure because more students are in those classes. So we are compliant from that point of view. We do have a plan for this year. We do have e-learning courses offered. This year, we have 42. We're meeting with educators this week, and we're going to try to open up more e-learning sections for second semester so that we can get that average for in-person learning to 23.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, just a follow-up. So does that mean we're not going to offer certain classes in person because we're kind of moving people to e-learning to bring down our average? Are we still going to maintain the in-person classes that we've always had?
Yes, through you, Chair. Yes, trustee Kennedy, we will have what we're going to do. So right now, we have 120 secondary schools that are on waitlist for the e-learning courses that they wanted. Okay, so together with some secondary principals to identify where we can open some e-learning sections so we can ensure that our students who have indicated they want to take those e-learning courses, they can. And also for students that maybe in Halton Catholic, we weren't offering that, per, but through e-learning.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, any clarification required?
Yeah, I can go back in the queue. Thank you.
I'll now jump to trustee Murphy, because trustee Saunders, you have spoken. I'll come back to you. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about mobility, the teacher mobility. Trying to get clarity on this. Does this mean that a teacher can transfer between boards without going through the hiring process again, or how has this changed? Thank you.
I think we'll skip through you, Chair. We'll skip the director and head over to Superintendent HR.
I think we'll skip skip the, through you, Chair, we'll skip the director and head over to Superintendent HR.
Through you, Chair. Uh, so the language in the last round of the collective agreements, um Article seventeen specifically, provided for an opportunity that didn't exist in the past, Trustee. And that was the opportunity for boards to hire permanently outside of individuals on their list. So said otherwise is, but prior to that new language, you hire into a permanent position at a school board once someone was an OT, and then their OT went to an OT roster. There used to be multiple steps. And I think in terms of what PPM one sixty five required, and I'm making my own assumption here, but in terms of what PPM one sixty five requires and the the need for ensuring more mobility, this was implemented and bargained at the central table. It it was a, you know, a a split, and now it's a fifty fifty split in the most recent round. So it's actually gone more, it it's moved from more increased opportunity for mobility, even in the most recent round that just concluded, and we ratified. So in the past, yeah, you couldn't hire anyone unless they were on your OT list and then your OT roster. We got rid of the OT roster. There's still obviously an OT list. But boards do have a certain number of individuals that they can hire, depending on the amount of permanent hiring that they're doing within the year, where they can hire them outside of that list, so from another board directly.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Thank you. I do have another question. Should I get back in the queue?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, um, this is through you, Mr. Chair, to um Director Klein. Uh, just specifically relating to Milton, are we currently dealing with any teacher shortages?
Thank you. Uh, Director Klein.
I'm gonna look to uh to staff on this now too. And you're talking permanent, not if somebody was off sick today or something, trustee?
Yeah, I'm just talking, are there any classes that are currently like not manned or over ratio or?
I I believe we've got some gaps, but I'll look over to, we have two superintendents that cover Milton, and we have
See, Murphy, to clarify, it's any subject.
Sort of just any school?
Yeah, I just want to know, are there?
Okay. Superintendent Oldman or Superintendent Cordero?
Or Skripak?
Or Superintendent Skripak, or Superintendent Bakaj?
In in my fam, in the family of schools for St. Ceteri, the only thing I was aware of is a slight delay in um arts positions. And that's kind of related to what Superintendent Oldman had already spoke to about um changes in staffing that were very sudden at the very beginning of September, that kind of delayed the hiring of people for the arts.
So we have all staff in place at St. Ceteri?
That I'm aware of, yes.
Uh, any others, Superintendent wants to talk about? Superintendent Bakaj?
Thank you, Chair. I I can echo what's already been stated by Superintendent Oldman and regarding um FSL. So given the largesse of the of the region, um we're doing, we're in really good shape. But like Superintendent Oldman has has stated, when we have last-minute notifications, it does, there's a process for filling those positions. So it's mainly in the arts and the FSLs, as we've noted already this evening.
So we we don't have staff for the arts? Uh, Superintendent Oldman?
Yeah, I I wouldn't say don't have, we're in the process of.
I, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Chair. The complicating factor of our current staffing situation, as we know, we are still in a continued state of redundancy. We have made great strides and efforts to reduce that number considerably year over year. That's good news. That can only be achieved through growth, right, or natural attrition, okay? The reality is, is that when we meet our primary class size statistics, I'm specifically talking about elementary. When we hit our primary class size statistics, there are points in order to hit those ministry requirements where we have to add components to classes. When we add, and I think this is what Superintendent Skripak was getting at, when we add a classroom, we also have to add a proportionate amount of FSL, depending on the class that we add, prep and arts. So when that happens, we have staffing needs. And and because we've just recently submitted our primary class size statistics, we will have positions that have been informed by the evolution of our system and by the growth that we've experienced in the class, um primary class size compliance that we have to hit. So yes, we will have positions that are actively being recruited for. I'm parking that. That is not in response to the FSL comments that I shared earlier, okay? Those are non-FSL components. So there are, there are, there are vacancies that are actively being filled because they were just new ads. The second thing that I want to add to that is when you're in a state of redundancy, those individuals who are, have lost their rights as a permanent teacher because they're on a redundancy list, have the option, they have ten days to accept an offer. And I have to offer it to every individual on that list until someone accepts. And if every person gets ten days, because that's what the collective agreement requires, I naturally, by logic, am outside of my ability to do that quickly. So that is where we may have some delays in our ability to staff because that's what the collective agreement requires of us, and we comply with that.
Uh, uh, Trustee, Murphy, are you, are you referring to secondary or are you referring to elementary or both?
I was gonna, I was hoping for both. Yeah, so I didn't really get clarity on that. So I guess just, just um what I really want to know is currently, across both panels, non-specialty and specialty, are there currently classes that are not, are are short of teacher and wherein the um the numbers are over the uh maximum?
Uh, I'll pass this to Director Klein first because you're Director Klein, comment.
I'm looking at Superintendent Oldman here. The numbers that are, can you repeat that?
May I? Sure. Um, so ultimately, I just want to know, are there gaps that are are not currently in the progress in the process of being filled wherein uh class either in elementary or um secondary are currently over the maximum numbers?
Okay. So the staff class?
I think I understood in terms of the class numbers, I'd see Superintendent uh Oldman, but if it's one about class, class numbers, then that could be Superintendent Denalfo.
I think it's Superintendent Denalfo.
We'll start with with you, yeah.
Through you, Chair. Trustee Murphy, um all all our classes, we're in compliance, so both in elementary and secondary. Okay, um so that that for sure is. And where we are exactly like what Superintendent Oldman has shared, we have some of these art position, positions, but that's the planning time. So it's not that there isn't a teacher, there is a teacher, it's an occasional teacher, but the actual permanent teacher for that arts assignment or FSL is waiting to be hired into that. Okay, but an occasional teacher would be filling that job right now.
Okay, gotcha. Just one last clarifying question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mine, for you, Mr. Chair. So in the elementary panel, we are not experiencing any teacher shortages currently. Milton?
Uh, Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. If if there's one that you want to speak about, I'm happy to. No, there's not of any my knowledge outside of French, which continues to be, and I think I answered that earlier. If there's one that you're aware of and and maybe I'm not, and so my delinquents I'll call out, I'm happy to speak through that and provide a a a quick resolve to it immediately, but that's not my knowledge.
Can I reference a school in, right now?
Uh, no, school in Milton, if it's Milton, then school, school in Oakville, something like that.
It's a school in Milton.
Not a name of the school.
Yeah, I can talk, I can talk. Okay. Should I name it?
Not need to name a school, but in the area, you can talk about a school in Milton School.
Yeah, and that that is my question. Is there currently a situation where there's a teacher shortage in any elementary school in Milton?
Okay, so that's a good question to uh Superintendent Oldman. Uh, is there shortage in any elementary school in Milton?
Outside of French, there is nothing that isn't underactive way. I regularly get absences that basically require an LTO. So if I'm talking in 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 cryptic, I I can't know for certainty. But I can assure you that any time that there's a vacancy, we're actively underway. French is the exception because we're in a level of of challenge there that I think I shared earlier. But any other non-FSL position that we are actively aware of is there, I can assure you, there is staffing efforts underway to fill that class as soon as possible.
Thank you. We shall go to the next trustee, uh, Trustee Murphy, our question, I'll put you back in the queue. Uh, Sanders, you're up next. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I and I appreciate the the diligent work that we're doing to staff these positions, but I'm also hearing about staff shortages in like the areas of tech and art, business and French. My question is, um, last year it came up that this group, this cadre of itinerants, consultants and coordinators was increasing and had been increasing for a couple of years. And from what I understand, these represent, you know, qualified teachers that were sort of taking out out of the classroom and putting them into sort of administrative positions. Is this still continuing, or is this cadre still increasing? Or are we, are we tapping into this resource to help fill some of our shortages?
Director Klein, can you direct this question to staff?
Through you, Chair. I can direct it to staff. I'm not, again, not quite sure, talk about a cadre of people who are supporting, I can guess this, so I'm gonna look to Superintendent Kroll and see if he could fill in some of the blanks.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. With regards to cord, the department, we've had changing in staff that's changed, that has changed based on ministry funding. So you'd be aware, last year, it was for STEAM and early literacy, those are no longer funded. With regards to new funding that came into the ministry this year, we did hire itinerants specific to early literacy screenings, so kindergarten, grade one and grade two. It's part of a new ministry initiative, though. Uh, so we've had a change. We also do have subject specialist consultants that are actively working to support uh our department heads as well as the earlier referenced uh student achievement plan. Um, and we do have a one French itinerant whose job is to work specifically to help address uh sites where there are vacancies. Uh, so she's actively going school to school and supporting those. There may not be a cadre, hardworking.
Yes, uh, no doubt, they are hardworking. I'm just wondering about the number, if, is is this increasing? So in these three groups, itinerants, consultants, coordinators, are we increasing this number or are they decreasing?
Terms of the itinerants and curriculum, it increased by, by, actually, it was flat. It was, again, it became solely solely because of the funding. The funding evaporated in one area and funding appeared in and if funding has to be spent on those positions for the early literacy itinerants, it's part of the central collective agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just, one, one follow-up, just very quickly. Do we use these uh staff to, do we average them in when we're figuring out class size? Are they part of that calculation when we say our classes are twenty three, but we use this group as part of the numerator?
Uh, Superintendent Oldman, I'm not sure.
Through you, Chair, they are not.
No.
They're not classroom, so they they can't be used against that statistic.
Okay.
Right? The classroom, the cla, the the class size statistics are based on the class size of the classroom.
Okay, uh, I think Superintendent, clarify some things to you later, uh, uh, Trustee Sanders on class numbers and how you can have a conversation there. Uh, we shall now move, yeah, we shall now move on to Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just back to the last question, um, regarding compliance. How many classes do we have running in person compared to e-learning?
Uh, Superintendent Denalfo, you have the numbers?
I don't have, sorry, through you, um, Chair. I don't have the number of in-person classes by sections, because it's by sections that we have per school, based on size. What I can tell you right now in terms of e-learning, we have forty two courses. We could have, from what the ministry funded us, for a hundred and eighty one e-learning courses. Uh, we do not have that desire by our student option sheets for this year. But we're trying to encourage students, if there's an opportunity, to consider taking some of the e-learning courses, if that's their desire. With that, for semester two.
Thank you, Trustee.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, the volume went on there. Did you direct me?
You missed?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't hear you there.
Uh, Superintendent, can I?
No, no, I I heard Superintendent Denalfo, I didn't hear what Mr. Chair said after.
Yeah, you have a follow-up question?
Oh, yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering regarding, you mentioned how we're in compliance. I just have a question about, on our website, we've also listed the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five board statistics for elementary. And we currently apparently have twelve classes in kindergarten above the maximum number of twenty nine. I'm just wondering how that's in compliance, um, given it's above the maximum.
Currently have nine percent. We actually have, we could have had thirteen, fourteen classes. We don't have thirteen, fourteen classes. We only have nine percent of them over.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Kennedy, any clarification?
Yeah, just follow-up. Where does it say we can go over, like it says we can only go over by ten percent if there is a couple of conditions met. And I think the one that was met last year for the first time was that we had kindergarten students in with a grade one students. Is that the reason why we're over? Because we have more kindergarten grade one splits?
We shall get clarification, Superintendent Denalfo?
Through you, Chair. Trustee Kennedy, there's many considerations why we can go over thirty two in oh, sorry, over twenty nine Catholic. We are a board that has French immersion, programming and other needs in our system. The ministry would not allow this compliance report for elementary, unlike secondary that would get, after the whole year has happened. We could not submit it unless we were compliant. It it doesn't let you, it goes red, you gotta fix it, you gotta add another class. So we are fully compliant by how Altacatholic is set up.
Thank you, uh, Superintendent Denalfo. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. I see another trustees hand up. Uh, I have just one question here for Director Klein. Uh, Director Klein, since school has started, do we have any class which was not staff? Or had an alternate teacher, we did not have a permanent teacher in the classroom? Or we are, we had somebody and staff has retired or something like that?
Okay, uh, through you, Chair. To to you, Chair, I'm 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 struggling with the question. Have we had a
Yeah.
Class or?
So since school has begun, do we have we always had a teacher in the classroom? Or a full-time permanent teacher, or we were using substitute teachers in the classroom for a particular course?
Uh, I could, I could look to staff here too, but my understanding is that I can think of at least one case where we had, uh, we didn't have a permanent teacher with the qualifications in a given area in a classroom for that course. And in those situations, we, there was always a teacher there. There's always a teacher supported not only by the uh, the principal at the school, which is an early term for what the principal is, but also the support of, uh, in a high school's case, uh, guidance department heads who are uh the key experts in their subject areas, other teachers and other professionals who were collaboratively to support them. And as Superintendent Kroll said earlier, or noted or referenced earlier, uh, central staff who have the responsibility and the privilege to be able to support teachers in in those areas. So teachers who perhaps don't have qualifications in a subject area but have certain qualifications in terms of student engagement, assessment practices that are second to none, and and uh instructional practices.
Okay, thank you, Director Klein. Uh, thank you for your update. Uh, Trustee Kennedy, your hand is up there. Do you have a question?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a question about commissioners. Um, I know last year, we we downloaded that cost onto the schools. I'm just wondering, have we had any pickup on schools being able to hire commissioners? And um, same with lunchroom supervisors, my understanding is we we downloaded that onto high schools as well. Have we had any, any, any feedback on that, if schools have been able to afford those positions?
Director Klein?
The purpose of commissioners and lunch hour supervisors as supports and extensions of other well-understood staff within schools, namely teachers and administrators. Uh, the purpose is to work to ensure that there is peace, order and and a good education within the school itself. So what I can say to you, Super, uh, Trustee Kennedy, is that all of the school, high schools uh have um with their superintendents, their family school superintendents at my behest, they have uh stated that they have a confidence in the uh, in the staff in their schools presently, whether it's no commissioners, one commissioner, three, two lunch hour supervisors, or none, or any uh combination thereof, to ensure that there is uh, again, safety and security within their schools.
Thank you, Director Klein. With that, I think we will wrap up question time on on your director's report. Thank you, Director Klein, for your report. Uh, we shall now move on to our next order of business, which is miscellaneous information, twelve point one, OCSA update. Trustee O'Han Chenada, please present your report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so within the document, there's a lot that I reported out in in actual writing this time. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So within the document, there's a lot that I reported out in actual writing this time, not verbally. So in the package, there's a lot of good information. It talks about, you know, the Oxta resolutions. It talks about CCSTA with links. It talks about advocacy, labor, Catholic Virtual Ontario. There's over 100 Catholic secondary online courses now available for students. Talked about the September Board of Directors meeting and then the fall regional meetings. And then the upcoming short video contest coming up, and that Oxta has a new office. So please, at your leisure, read through the documents. If you do have any question, as always, please feel free to reach out to me. If I don't have the answer, I'll sure find what for you. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustees, any questions for trustee Ohan Chanada? Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada, for presenting your detailed report. And with that, we shall move on to item 13, correspondences. We have no correspondences, question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions?
To my knowledge, no.
No. Okay, thank you. We do not have to go into camera. And we shall now move on to resolution regarding absentees. We have all trustees present tonight. And then we move on to our final order of business, which is adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Murphy. All in favor? Online, everybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Trustee Ohan Chanada, please lead us in the closing prayer.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Please, let's make the sign of our faith, name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Thank you for your amazing power and work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. Thank you that you are able to bring hope through even the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. Thank you for your great love and care. Thank you for your mercy and grace. Thank you that you're always with us and will never leave us. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice so that we might have freedom in life. Forgive us for when we don't thank you enough for who you are, for all that you do, for all that you've given. Help us to set our eyes and our hearts on you afresh. Renew our spirits. Fill us with your peace and joy. We love you and we need you. This day and every day, we give you praise and thanks for you alone are worthy. Amen.
Thank you for a great meeting. Good night.